Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, September 13th, meeting for the Board of County Commissioners. Is Jocelyn Williams in here? Hi, Jocelyn. If you could open up the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission members, for the opportunity to offer an invocation this morning. On behalf of all Brevard County residents, thanks to you, thanks to the county employees, contract staff, volunteers, and citizens for the hard work and effort you bring each and every day. Today, let us not be distracted by the many things in our lives. Let's place them on pause for the morning and focus on the task at hand, the business of the county. As the county proclaims Constitution Week, let us consider the words of the framers. James Madison asked, "What is government itself but the greatest of all reflections on human nature? May this meeting reflect our shared values of trust, fellowship, and ethics, and may we place service above self in our endeavors here today and each day to come. May we recognize and listen to all voices who are here sharing ideas." John Adams once said, quote, "Government is instituted for the common good, for the protection, safety, prosperity, and happiness of the people," end quote. In honor of those words, may we work together towards the shared mission we have of making our community better each and every time we meet. May the Commission deliberate with wisdom, insight, and impartiality. And this morning, as we conduct the business of the county, may we take the time to lift everyone in the same way others have lifted us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. All right. Could you stand and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flagline of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on, two minutes for approval. Commission?
Move to approve the minutes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to resolutions, awards, and presentations, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie, want to come up front and center?
Good morning.
Good morning. And anybody else you want?
This is my camera.
All right, I'm going to read this, and then I'll give you the floor. Okay? Good deal. Thank you for being here. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in Florida where 10.6% of people face hunger and do not know where their next meal will come from, and whereas Brevard County is committed to taking steps to raise awareness and combat hunger in every part of our community, and whereas the members of Second Harvest Food Bank of Central Florida have distributed more than 10 million meals to individuals in Brevard County in 2021 alone, whereas members of Second Harvest Food Bank of Central Florida distribute more than 250,000 meals every single day throughout the six-county service area in Central Florida, whereas the month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to enlist the public in the fight to end hunger by taking action, whereas food banks across the country, including the members of the Second Harvest Food Bank of Central Florida, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness to and help end hunger in their local community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby recognize September 23rd, 2022, as Hunger Action Day in Brevard County. Madam Chair, I move to approve this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you for having us. My name is Stephanie Palacios, and I'm the Director of Advocacy and Government Relations at Second Harvest Food Bank. I've had the privilege to meet a few of you, and I think I will be meeting with some others of you shortly. I brought along our Director of our Brevard County branch, Greg Hansen, and he has a couple of words that he wants to share with you all.
Good morning. Thanks for bringing attention to this issue. I'm the branch director for Second Harvest Food Bank here in Brevard. You mentioned the poundage of food that is distributed annually. We know from our hunger data that one out of six individuals in Brevard County is food insecure, not knowing where their next meal is going to come from should hardship fall upon them. But we do know that, as of late, that's probably not quite as accurate. Our pantries that partner with us have reported folks showing up to their pantry lines, an increase of 38%. So we do know that need is increasing. So we will continue to get food out to the community. Thanks for bringing attention to this, and we will continue to support Brevard County all the way up from Titusville down to Palm Bay. We partner with over 80 other nonprofits to get food out to those in need. So, thank you very much.
Do you want to address how you get your funding and how you accumulate the food, just so the folks know?
Well, multiple ways. So I believe about 68 to 70% of our funding is through private donations, and our food is donated from anyone, from Publix to Tyson to any big box store. We have a program called Retail Rescue where our trucks go to Publix and Walmart and Target and pick up food and bring it back to the warehouse so that we can distribute it. This food would otherwise be wasted. So we rescue that food and get it out into the community. Additionally, we receive some funding from the federal government through TFAP USDA commodities. We also receive some funding from the state of Florida. So it's kind of a big pot, a mix.
Good. Thank you so much, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much for bringing attention to this.
Thank you. Wait, guys.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Lisa Waters?
Ma'am.
Ma'am, I'm going to read the resolution, and then you have the floor. Thank you. Whereas September 17th, 2022 marks 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document in the memorial anniversary to the patriotic celebrations which will celebrate the occasion in issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we would go ahead and proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitutional Week in Brevard County.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Move to approve.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so very much, Commissioners. My name is Lisa Waters. I'm the Regent of the Abigail Wright Chamberlain chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Pardon me. We're a all-woman volunteer nonprofit organization, service organization. Our mission is to educate our youth, to support our veterans, and to support our patriots and the Constitution, of course. I want to thank you for this proclamation, very important to recognize this week in our form of government, which is, as you mentioned, the most magnificent form of government on the planet Earth. I invite you to visit the Sun Tree Library, where we have a display in one of your windows. We also have one at the Fee Library if you're down in that area. So thank you again for this opportunity and for the recognition of Constitution Week. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
So you're one of the Daughters of the Revolution, and you can trace your lineage all the way back to the Revolution?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. My great-great-great-great-grandfather fought in the Battle of Yorktown. And my family had a small farm and a stone grinder, and they provided sustenance, food, and wheat to the Continental Army.
Very cool. I just read about the Battle of Yorktown. It was, I think the book was called "In the Eye of the Hurricane."
Really? I haven't read that book.
It's a very, very good history book. It told me stuff, and I'm a history nut. But it spelled out an awful lot of the minute details of what led up to Yorktown and the sea battles. I had no idea that there was, it was so, the sea battles were so integral to the success of Yorktown.
Well, thank you again for recognizing this very important week in our American history.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask that you get in the center, please.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to consent. Commission, do you want anything polled? Commissioner Tobias?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I would like F-13 and F-14 polled.
Okay.
I'll be voting no on both of these, so if there's no other comment, then we don't need to discuss them.
Yeah, I want to poll F-14, so...
Okay, then I'll vote, I'd like F-13 polled no without comment. There's no one else discussing it. We'll just open F-14 up with your...
All right, so I have a motion to approve consent, minus F-13 and 14, with Commissioner Tobias voting negative for F-13, and we're going to discuss F-14. Is that clear? All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I had no cards either on any of those. So item F-14, I spoke with Peter about a little bit. It had to do with the cultural support grants with the TDC. And my concern with that item was, was that these organizations got 50% more than what they were asking for even, as far as the request for funding. And I guess it's because we had extra money, so they were just arbitrarily given more. And rather, you know, at least in my mind, either keep that money, set it aside, either for affordable housing, or distribute it to other agencies for their, for their events. So I won't be supporting it the way it sits. Commissioner Pritchett?
I don't disagree with you, Madam Chair. And I know we're doing a lot of work on the TDC. I see it later in our agenda package. So I'm with you. I'm probably not going to support, I'm not going to support this either. And we probably need to move that money over into a place we can reserve it. But I do want to bring up for discussion for us, and I will probably do it later on the agenda too, is I think what we need to start working towards is having a more equitable distribution among the districts and the commission. So I think this board, if we would, maybe charge the TDC with working towards making sure, I mean, it doesn't have to be exact, but I think District 5 needs more funds, District 1 needs more funds, and District 3. So, I mean, District 4, 2, 4, sorry, 2 gets, 2 does good and 3 does good. Commissioner Tobias, you're doing pretty good down there. So I think we just need to maneuver this money a little bit better moving forward with the TDC boards. I wanted to throw that comment out there for, for thought.
I have a question.
Commissioner Smith?
So if we vote no on 14, are you guys authorizing the payment minus the 50%? Or you're just mixing it all together?
That's what I would recommend, is that they receive the funding that they'd asked for and not the extra funding, just because...
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. Okay, I'm good.
I would make that motion, that we would approve the original funding and not the extra amount to these projects.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett to approve the funding level at the amount requested and not the additional 50%. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that's a good idea, but I traditionally or consistently always vote no. I see the dinosaur museum is on here. The fact that we're throwing, continue to throw money at dinosaurs and not affordable housing probably is problematic. Certainly, your solution is a lot better than the status quo here, but just for consistency's sake, I'm going to be voting no on this.
Okay, I'll second it then.
She did. Commissioner Pritchett did. Oh, wait, you made the motion.
She made the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Smith, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-1. All right, moving on to the first round of public comments. I have no cards, and I think that it's the first time that's ever happened since I've been chair, I mean, both times. Moving on to public hearings, item H-1. Run! He was hustling. Sorry, didn't mean to embarrass you.
Good morning, Commissioners. H-1 is a petition to vacate a public utility and private drainage easement, 8175 Belford Way, for Mr. and Mrs. Frolick Ray. It's in District 4. It is requesting the vacate of a three-foot portion of a 10-foot wide public utility and private drainage easement for the existing home to remain in place. There are no issues.
All right, Commission?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. And I have no cards. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H-2?
H-2 is a petition to vacate a public utility and drainage easement, 6480 Adrian Street, Port St. John, Unit 6, for Mr. and Mrs. Mazak. It's in District 1. Petitioners requesting to vacate a one-foot portion of a six-foot wide public utility and drainage easement to allow for an existing pool screen enclosure to be replaced. There are no issues.
Motion to approve, ma'am?
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-1. All right, moving on to the first round of public comments. I have no cards, and I think that it's the first time that's ever happened since I've been chair, I mean, both times. Moving on to public hearings, item H-1. Run! He was hustling. Sorry, didn't mean to embarrass you.
Good morning, Commissioners. H-1 is a petition to vacate a public utility and private drainage easement, 8175 Belford Way, for Mr. and Mrs. Frolick Ray. It's in District 4. It is requesting the vacate of a three-foot portion of a 10-foot wide public utility and private drainage easement for the existing home to remain in place. There are no issues.
All right, Commission?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. And I have no cards. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H-2?
H-2 is a petition to vacate a public utility and drainage easement, 6480 Adrian Street, Port St. John, Unit 6, for Mr. and Mrs. Mazak. It's in District 1. Petitioners requesting to vacate a one-foot portion of a six-foot wide public utility and drainage easement to allow for an existing pool screen enclosure to be replaced. There are no issues.
Motion to approve, ma'am?
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. H-3?
Good morning, Commissioners. Item H-3 is the first public hearings to amendments to Section 62, 1844, Brevard County Code of Ordinances for the Criteria of Tiny Homes and Tiny Houses on Wheels. These amendments create a common maximum square footage of 750 square feet across all zoning classifications, which they're currently allowed. It also allows for multiple tiny homes in the mobile home park zoning classification, and it removes the requirement to gain notarized approval from owners when a building next to their properties. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer. Oh, and by the way, I meant to give you the update. The LPA approved it unanimously yesterday.
Nice. All right, I have three cards. Brian, did you want to come up?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and the members of the County Commissioners. My name is Brian Sodre. I'm the owner of Minneapolis. Minneapolis is dedicated, dedicated to building safe, affordable, and sustainable housing. And today I wanted to share with you a few fun facts about the averages of homes today in Florida. Today, the average home size in Florida is about 1,300 square feet. Statistics have shown that most, the most used space in that home is an average of 400 square feet. That means that only 30% of your house is typically used. The average energy bill for a home today is around $211. Excuse me. For a tiny home, an energy bill would average about $63. That's 70% less than your average home. Average water bill cost for a standard home is about $72. For a tiny home, it would be about $53. That's 25% less. Average home insurance cost is about $2,300. For a tiny home, it would be about $650. That's 70% less. Average home cost is about $350,000. A tiny home, $200,000. As you can see, there's problems today with affordable housing and sustainable building, and I'm in favor of what the changes that are being made today. Minneapolis prides themselves in, in providing the solution to affordable housing. We build to last. We build fast. There's, with low maintenance costs, high energy efficiency, to reduce our carbon footprint, and they're good-looking homes. Today, I wanted to bring a few tiny home residents with me today to share what kind of people live in tiny houses. In my opinion, they're smart people, they're kind people, they're thoughtful people, they're joyful people, they're conscious people, they're simple people, and they're loving people. And that's it for me today. Again, my name's Brian Sodre with Minneapolis. Let's build tiny together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Brian? Brian, you mentioned that an average tiny home is about 200,000?
Yes.
How many square feet are you talking about?
So we have three separate models that range between 500, and thanks to today's changes, we'll offer up to 750 square feet. So they'll range between 200,000 to 250,000.
So how much, I'm not that good with my numbers, and I'm assuming you have this answer. So what kind of square foot average per, per dollar? I mean, how many dollars per square foot are we talking about here?
When it comes to cost per square footage, you will see higher numbers simply because of the smaller footprint of the home and certain expenses that you cannot get away from, such as land cost, site development, impact fees, design cost, that you simply can't get away from. So on average, it's about $300 a square foot.
So the $200,000 you're quoting here, that includes land cost?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And for quote-unquote "normal-sized" house that you were talking about, roughly what would the average square foot of that house be?
The average-sized home, 1,300 square feet.
1,300 square feet. So that's the $300,000 number that you use? That's where you got that from?
Yes.
Okay. Interesting. Because they're tiny homes, but they're not tiny prices.
Right. We are building in the most expensive time in history when it comes to new construction. And there's certain things that Minneapolis is not willing to sacrifice, and that's building well-built homes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, my pleasure. Thank you.
Brandon?
How are we going?
Good.
I am a resident at one of the communities that Brian's building one of his homes at, actually in the Realtor that sells all the lots for the Brevard Properties. I moved my family there. We own a tiny house on Wheels. It's about 400 square feet. It's me, the wife, and the three-year-old. We have both separate lofts, very, we went tiny to chase some levels of financial freedom. I mean, we're a young family. We're completely debt-free. We had the house paid off in cash. We have the only, you know, the most major bill we have is our land rent for 650. So tiny for us was a path to chase life with a little more financial freedom, a little more freedom to kind of do it, you know, to experience life instead of, you know, kind of work our life away in a sense. So we, yeah, we both, everyone works at home. We have a family. We have chickens, gardens. We have a, we're building a, trying to build some kind of sustainability community aspect to it. We've got community gardens. We're building a clubhouse and pool, so it still has that, you know, little development kind of that you would see in your standard suburban neighborhood. And, yeah, so tiny for us is definitely by choice. I, like he said, it's definitely a niche of individuals that are coming after the tiny living. It seemed very similar, people that are just looking for simpler, looking for cheaper, affordable ways to live. And, yeah, but still, I mean, we have multiple families in there. We got the retirees, we got the single guys, the single ladies. You know, it's a good mix throughout the whole community. And, yeah, I'm definitely afford anything tiny house. I think it's a, it might become a necessary thing for many people, unfortunately. But, you know, for now, for us, it's something that's been very positive. And, you know, we're just here to hopefully help push this tiny, simple living to more people and figure out this crazy world.
Who is your community?
We are located off of 520 in Cocoa. We're right, yeah, right off 52095. So I support, and hopefully you guys support, whatever. So, I support, and hopefully you guys support whatever realities we need to continue growing.
Thank you.
Any questions? No? Thank you.
All right, April?
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is April Ocampo. I am a mother. I am a wife. I'm a student at Harvard Extension School, currently studying literature and creative writing, and an aspiring writer. I've been living in my tiny house with my husband and two children a little over a year and a half now. My reasoning for going tiny is very contrasted from my neighbors. It wasn't economics, minimalism, family ties that led me to this community. It was actually spiritualism. I'm Christian. I try to live my life as spirit-led as possible. I realize I may sound like a lunatic to some people in the room, but I felt that I was completely called to live in this tiny home at two hundred square feet in the woods of St. Augustine. We lived there for close to a year, and as the story played out, that's how we ended up here at Peacewind Community off of Five Twenty. Like maybe some of you, I was under the impression that tiny homers were maybe hippies. Loved their gardens, were barefoot. That's kind of, nothing about tiny living attracted me from the start. I was just going where I felt led. But since living tiny, I have discovered how many biblical principles really you find living there. I've learned to live simply. I've seen what it looks like to let go of material things. I've had more time to focus on core values, on nature. I've discovered what it truly means to get to know your neighbors. I'm from California. I'm from the city, Los Angeles. Never met my neighbors in my thirty years of life. So, I've never introduced myself to my neighbors prior to living here. There's probably a lot more reasons, positive reasons, that I can say for living tiny than I can really squeeze into three minutes. But I think it's definitely a step in the right direction, and people need to give it a little bit more of a chance. Thank you.
You bring up an interesting point that I hadn't thought of. And blessings to you for your motivation.
Thank you.
Material things.
Yes.
It's only my wife and myself now on the house that we've had for thirty years. And we're cleaning out, we have two garages. Cleaning out the garages, and we've filled up almost one garage with quote-unquote junk. It was important to us at one point in time, and an awful lot of it is Christmas decorations. But you certainly can't worship material things, and not that I worship this stuff, but you go through it and it brings back memories, but it's still, if you don't need it anymore, it's still junk.
Yeah. It's a, it's a hard tear of the Band-Aid to really, I'll admit, at first, I had so many things that I just couldn't imagine letting go of. You know, just things that were so sentimental to me, and with time, you kind of just shed them off, and I really didn't need any of them.
So, you're reaching out to the simple life.
The simple life, definitely.
Good for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Pritchett?
I'm, I'm pretty cool with it. I think the competitive market will regulate it as we move forward anyways, with people that want to purchase it or not. Kurt, I love what you said, other than I'd have nowhere to put on my shoes. So...
You have that many shoes?
I might. So, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve this when you're ready.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. It's a win for tiny houses, for sure.
Big win.
All right, item H4.
Pursuant to Section two point six of the Brevard County Home Rule Charter, the salary of the county commissioners does not adjust automatically by any formula, but rather on every even-numbered year, the commission has the opportunity to consider an ordinance to increase their salary, the salary of commissioners for the next two years. It is capped in the charter, the specified salary increase shall not exceed either the average percentage increase in the salaries of county employees for the fiscal year just concluded, or percentage change in consumer price index from the previous year, whichever is less. In this case, the lesser of those two numbers is the increase in the salaries of county employees for the fiscal year just concluded, which is three point three seven percent. So, before the commission today is a proposed ordinance that would fix the salary of commissioners for the next two years with a three point three seven percent increase over current salary, resulting in a new salary of sixty thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Oh, old light.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna speak up on this. I'm assuming that you guys might be embarrassed because you'd be talking about, when would this take place? I mean, would it...
This would not be effective until January one.
Okay, so, you guys understandably probably don't want to step up and say, give me a raise of three percent. But I am not going to be here, and I would speak up anyway, because I think to be, quite frankly, embarrassed to receive a three percent increase after thirty years of a fixed salary is, is nothing to be embarrassed about. Everybody's seen inflation go through the roof. Certainly in the last thirty years, it's, I have no clue, but I'm sure it's gone up a lot. So, I don't think it's outrageous or ridiculous to contemplate and receive a three percent increase on a fifty-eight thousand dollar salary that's just slightly more than half of what the state recommends for a county of this size. So, I would highly recommend that my fellow commissioners consider voting for this and set the standard for future commissions.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. I also wanted to notate on this, because I've been reading some of the commentaries out there in media land. And this is, this is about, I think about twenty-five dollars a week. So, it is what, like sixty cents an hour? And all the minimum wages are going up a dollar. And we've done real well with county staff, of course, over the last six to eight years. We've been very consistent trying to get county staff's income up. Again, with this commission, it probably is not going to make a bunch of difference, but the hope is the next commission group coming in, they'll, they'll have an opportunity to start getting those salaries up some. As Commissioner Smith said, we're about half of what other commissions make in the state, and it's fine, but it kind of forces us to have to have other income because of what we do in life. So, I, I hope this will help the future commissions quite a bit. I don't, I don't feel bad about it at all. It's still a very, very small amount. And again, it's, it's, it's going to affect the future commissions moving forward. And guys, you know what? You get what you pay for, and we need people that have, I mean, you run the county. You have to have people with the abilities to do this. So, there's a cost involved. So, I wanted to say that. And I know Commissioner Zonka's gonna say this, but it's been twenty-five years, because she said it last time, since this commission has any kind of increase. And before that, there was consistent increases on the county commission. So, I just wanted to make that notation, because I read a lot of things out there in the media that was like, man, so...
I think, I think you said quite a bit, and probably, you know, I'm not going to repeat everything you said, but, you know, the biggest criticizer of our, our salary even discussion, you know, in nineteen ninety-three, commission salary was forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven. Adjusted for inflation, that value today is eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty. So, while one commissioner from that time or that era could brag about how this is the only job he had to do, he could quit his private sector job, well, yeah, I mean, you made the equivalent of an eighty-eight thousand dollar job, which is why a lot of us have to have part-time work outside of our commission. There's not a commissioner up here that works full-time outside of our commission office. So, for all the criticism and all the, you know, the stone-throwers, that's just not true. Obviously, the two thousand dollars a year is, is not going to make a huge difference for us up here, because, I mean, if that were the case, we would have been doing this all along and, and just not even thought twice about it. But I think it's going to help future commissions, you know, maybe give them the courage, or at least, you know, to say, this is, this is ridiculous, that, you know, you have to have another job outside of the office. Because really, if you want a full-time commissioner, then you, your commissioner can't work a part-time job. So, anyhow, that's all I'll say about it. I think Commissioner Pritchett said mostly everything I wanted to say. But again, from nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-six, commission progressively got an increase in their salary. That's the eighty-eight thousand dollars, and by ninety-six, that value today was eighty-nine thousand, five hundred. So, put that in today's value, it's a significant difference. Inflation's a funny thing. Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes three one. All right. Item H5.
Good morning, Commissioners. This request is for approval of a rate resolution to impose non-advalorm special assessments for local hospitals for the state's Medicaid managed care program. This is our second year participating in this program. And what it does, it allows the state to access federal funds for managed care plan expenditures for plan-covered services, and it offsets the hospital's Medicaid shortfall. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, I have a card, item H5, Ryan Hales?
Just question.
Or Haley? Okay.
Motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Smith?
I want to go back to H4 while the conversation's still on everybody's mind. We've talked about how minuscule the salaries are now for the commissioners compared to thirty years ago and twenty years since they've had a raise. One of the other things I want everybody in the public, and hopefully the newspapers paying attention, there's not one commissioner, past or present, in the last five or six years that doesn't have staff, personal staff, that are making far more than they are. So, the boss is making fifty-eight thousand, and the staff is making anywhere between sixty-five and eighty thousand. So, that's skewed also. So, that's something else that the, the public needs to know about.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith? All right, H6?
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you. H6 is a proposed amendment to the Brevard County Ordinances, Section one oh two, one twenty, which establishes the tourist development council and provides for its composition, terms, and the appointment of a chairperson. As it stands right now, Section one oh two, one twenty differs in slight ways from the Florida statute providing for tourist development tax and for the establishment of a tourism development council, and that statute is one twenty-five point oh one zero four. This proposed, these proposed amendments are to bring our code in line with state statute. So significantly, one of the changes is currently our code provides for at least three members who are owners or operators of hotels, motels, et cetera, hoteliers. This would bring it in line with the statutory language, which provides for at least three, but no more than four. Currently, our code provides for at least three non-hotelier-type members. The statute provides for at least two, but no more than three. The code currently provides that the chair of the, of the council shall be the commissioner that's serving on that council, and to bring that in line with practice, and again with the statute, the ordinance would provide that it is either that, that commissioner, or with that commissioner's consent. If that commissioner does not desire to serve as chair, then the TDC could elect a member, another member of the council to be chair. And then finally, it clarifies there is a two-term limit in our code to service on the TDC. This would clarify that members who are appointed to fill the unexpired term of a vacancy, that that service in the unexpired term doesn't count towards that two-term limit. And those, those are the changes proposed in this amendment, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
No? Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, sir. That was very quick, good work you brought. Commissioner Tobias, thank you for suggesting we tighten this up. I certainly appreciate it. And my, my thought on this is that this is, this is good, that we're tightening it, and that I, I do believe that the county commission should service the chair. So, whoever's appointed next term should probably service chair on that, too, to help keep it a move forward, and plus, you know, you get, get the business a little bit tighter. I do want to just mention, since it says in here October eight, we need to be working on probably all of our boards by October eight, guys. I think we've been notoriously late for getting them in. But I want to mention that while our staff's listening, that we probably should get our board appointments ready in the next month or so. So, the SOARL, we should look at that, and look at all these boards we've been assigning appointees to, and get ready to make changes if we want to.
Okay. All right, I have a card, Eva.
Nagmahali.
Nagmahali?
Yeah. That was pretty good.
Hello. My name is Eva Nagmahali, and I reside at thirty-four thirteen Willowood Drive in West Melbourne, the county, actually. I don't know if this is the correct forum for this, but I do read the newspaper, and I have read articles which made me quite concerned, number one, about the salary, but that is decided. But this is, well, and does this have anything to do with the council on the Driftwood decision? Is this the same thing? Could I ask someone, is this going to affect who will be on the tourist advisory board?
Yes, Commissioner Tobias?
And I think I'm best suited to answer this one, because I was on the other side of that vote. We had some stipulations in, in county code, and then there were some state guidelines. So, what this does is this is mirroring the state guidelines, because we ask a little more flexibility to appoint folks. So, if the state does go along with that, we will be in line with state statute. So, all this is doing is putting, aligning us with state statute. And again, I can say that because I was on the other side. I did not want to hand, I did not want, I voted on the opposite side of that, and yet I still think that our guidelines should be similar to that of the state, so...
Well, I kind of heard that there was a discretion, like either three or four or whatever, so it still gives you discretion on what you want to do.
It gives us a minimum and then a maximum.
A maximum, correct.
So, that's a state guideline. That's not the county. We can't...
Well, what I was concerned about was what I had read about was that in trying to remove those within the hotel business of being the majority, that instead putting other people that were like-minded with the majority commissioners, and that did not sound very good to me at all. If you were doing this for the future situations, I could comprehend it. But when this is being changed in order to be able to put something through, to me sounds undemocratic. It doesn't, it's not the right way to do it. So, I'm very uncomfortable with this passing when it sounds like it doesn't make a big difference, and yet the way I read it, it will make a big difference. Then the other part, and I got to be quick, the other part was in using the tourist tax money as a resource for funding housing, low-income housing. I'm going, whoa, you know, it's, who can be against helping people? But you don't take money from what, quote, is the tourist tax, redefine it in your terms, and then change everything and use that money as a source. It's just not, not quite right. And I need an explanation, because as a taxpayer and a concerned Brevard citizen, this is not the way I want my government to be run, and I appreciate your time.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, ma'am. The, the motion that we're doing today, ma'am, is, is getting us, as Commissioner Tobias said, getting us in line with state statutes, because we've been a little bit off, and we need to get in line. The project you're talking about, that was done a while ago, and the, the TDC board is an advisory board to this commission, just like planning and zoning. They, they go out and they hash out. We listen to information, so that it comes here, we have to make the decision. It's always up to this board to make a decision. I'm, I'm sure Commissioner Zonka is going to be able to help us with the, the problem we have with there being a conflict of interest. She, she does that so elegantly, so I'm gonna let her do that in a second if she wants to. But any other board I've been on, you don't have board members that have directly a benefit to them as they make decisions, so it's, it's kind of uncomfortable. But the wonderful thing up here is none of us are in those businesses. So, when it comes to the commission, and I've served with these guys a long time, we make decisions... decisions that's best for all of Brevard County. Even that decision we made, it's not benefiting any of our districts. It was a district that's missing a Commissioner, so we had to do a little extra work on that as well. So I, I'm, I like the path we have going. Again, I hope that we're able to change some of the state's criteria, because I think it would make it a better board and help us make better decisions for everybody in the county, because we can't just serve certain groups of people, we have to serve everybody. And as far as the other, it's, it's actually more of a workforce housing. We have all of these tourist entities coming, making great money, but we can't afford for places to live for people that work in these industries, so that's an important aspect. So I completely support the workforce housing that has brought up, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what we're doing with some of those funds, moving it towards that. And that's my end, ma'am.
I'll try not to belabor the point too much, but as far as the hotels, you know, collecting the tax, that, that is part of, it's a bed tax, they collect the tax. However, if they're less than thirty percent of all tourism spending, then why should they be the only ones that benefit from it? So we want to make sure that this money's more evenly distributed. Again, I think you hit the nail on the head when you said the tourism, the TDC is an advisory board. There are appointed members, and they advise the commission. Sometimes we agree with them, sometimes we don't. But this constant regurgitation of this, you know, thirty million dollar Driftwood stuff is, is, and when you clarify it, when you explain it to somebody who actually is unbiased and not, you know, what, what I say doesn't stand to benefit or lose, they're taking money that they collect from their hotel. It's not coming out of our general fund, it's not coming from other agencies. No other agency is going to lose by Driftwood keeping some of that marketing money to market their property and to market Cocoa Beach. So, you know, if someone else wants to come up with an idea to invest four hundred million dollars into our community, I'm, I'm all ears. You want to have some of that tax collection back? Okay. But to say that or suggest that it's taking from somebody else, yeah, it's taking from your sweet honeypot of money that you're used to spending just in your area. That's what it's taking from. This, this covers the entire county. Everyone will benefit from what Driftwood has to offer, and I just, I don't like how it's being spun, you know? It's not a tax giveaway, you know? It's not, I guess it makes good headlines, but it's not actually the truth. And as far as affordable housing goes, yeah, you're darn right, we want to make sure that the workforce has housing they can afford, because those are the people that work at the hotels. Those are the people that work in the tourism industry. So, yeah, we have a responsibility to those folks as well. So if we can take a small, we just tried to give a cultural grant another fifty percent because we had too much money in our cultural grant fund. We said, we've got extra money, so you only asked for twenty, but we're going to go ahead and give you twenty-five or, or thirty. Yeah, we're going to give you thirty thousand, just because we have extra money. So you're telling me we couldn't have used that hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty thousand dollars to put into workforce housing bank? You'd rather give it to the dinosaur museum when they didn't even ask for it? So spare me the, we don't have a responsibility to affordable housing, because every hotel benefits from somebody who would benefit from that affordable housing. So I'll get off, I'll stop. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, you, you brought up a lot of good points, I just have to throw in one more point, too. Again, this, as Commissioner Zonka said, this is money the hotels directly collect. This Weston project, and I hope this will get printed, they have to collect the funds to be able to get the funds. And what it is, two guys, there's like a twelve million dollar pot out there that we, we do advertising with. What we really did was give a four hundred million dollar hotel that's successful in advertising areas, the ability to advertise the Space Coast. And they're, I mean, we have problems with getting good advertising out there, they know what they're doing, so we're allowing them to take over and do this advertising. They're not pocketing it, it's completely reimbursement on what they do to promote the Space Coast. And, and so that's, that's the truth of it. You can, you can frame it however you want, but that's all that's happening, is they collect it, and if they do a good job collecting it, their advertising's doing good, but there's also a cap on it. So it, it ended up being quite a clever way of doing things, and there was so much talk about county building convention centers. I never would agree to that, because it would have saddled us with all kinds of problems, especially in downtimes. So this was a really good project, and what I loved about it, there were so many different opinions, and we had to work really, really hard to get a good decision after having people that wanted to stay in their niche. You know, we, we needed to get outside of that niche. Again, it doesn't do anything for any of us, we had to really do our homework and make good decisions for the Cocoa Beach area, and I, I think you're going to see Cocoa Beach really have a lot of tourists come in because of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't want to beat this to death, but there are a couple of points that you guys, and you've made great points, but a couple of points that you guys haven't made. I hear from my constituents that we're taking their taxes and benefiting one hotel group. Well, folks, for the eighteenth zillionth time, this isn't property taxes, this is tourist development taxes. So unless you or any other citizen of this county spends a night, one night, in a motel or hotel in this county, none of your tax money is going toward this. And if you spent one night, it would be pennies that's taken out of that night for the tourist development tax. So for once and for all, I hope people get it, that tourist development tax is not property taxes. One other thing that I wanted to mention was that currently, the property that exists there, the building that was on it or is still, International Palms was the hotel, their contribution to the tourist development tax yearly was roughly around two hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So the Weston company, they're anticipating that they're going to bring in somewhere in the three to four million dollar range per year, as opposed to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if you do your math quickly, that's an increase of three-quarters of a million dollars every single year, additional monies that are going to the tourist development tax that weren't coming in, never would have come in from the tour, from the International Palms. They just weren't bringing that kind of people in. They weren't bringing in people that would spend upwards of five, six hundred dollars a night. They were bringing in people that were spending a hundred bucks to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a night. Big difference in clientele. This is a four-point-five-star hotel. We don't have one of those in this county. So that's another big factor in its favor. So if you just do the quick math, if they, and there's no guarantee they're going to get thirty million, but that's the other number that's pitched around, they're going to get thirty million dollars a year over, over thirty years. Well, that's only if they perform, and that means that they have to raise at least three million dollars a year in tourist development tax, which is a huge increase over the seven hundred and fifty thousand that the building was currently bringing. So if you multiply seven hundred and fifty thousand times thirty, you're well over twenty-four, two hundred and forty million dollars more to the county tax total tourist development tax, two hundred and forty million dollars more than if International Palms had sat there for thirty years. So folks, put all of this in perspective. Yeah, they might get thirty million, they might not, but if they do, more power to them, because the county benefits. And how about this? How about if they raised five million dollars per year? They're only getting one million out of that, so that's a four million dollar, four-point-two-five million dollar increase over what the International Palms is bringing in. So this is a big, big number and a big benefit to the county. So people that are trying to sell this short, they're being very disingenuous, and that's, that's being kind.
Doesn't make for a good headline unless you call it a tax giveaway.
Well, I know, and we know what sells headlines.
All right, counsel? Commission?
Motion to approve the amendment to Brevard County Code, Chapter 102, Section 120.
I think Commissioner Pritchett made the motion.
Sorry.
That's okay, you'll second?
He brought it, he should get to make it, and I'll second it.
No, no, I don't care.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item I one?
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. On August thirtieth, the board had tasked staff, and I want to give some significant credit to Myra Staff, who's been extraordinarily responsive and diligent to being very attentive to what the board had to say and the discussion that you had at the August thirtieth meeting, so that they could work on providing you a draft and guidelines to discuss this morning addressing the Myra Plan update that is going to move forward. What the board had asked you to, staff to do, was to address the issue of affordable housing, infrastructure, parks and recreation, and administrative costs, and provide an outline and a framework for the board to then provide some guidance to Myra to look at a future update that would come back to the Board of County Commissioners. And that has been provided to you within a very short timeframe. They actually completed that in a little bit over a week. So I think they've done a, a nice job, and we are very much looking forward to the board's input, so that we can send something to the Myra Board.
All right. I have only one card, but I think it's for questions. Commissioner Tobias?
Do you, do you only have one card?
Yeah, but it's for questions only.
Thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair, and God put a little pressure on us, Frank there, saying they've done a great job to go to the contrary. And I will agree with you on that, but it's nice to hear Frank give his opinion out here. I think it's very welcomed and it's very accurate as well. The quality of work done in such a short period of time is, is quite remarkable. In all honesty, this came out of my office, and I was not expecting it back so quickly. So that being said, I think there's even too much specificity on some things here, and, and I think that can be changed around a little bit, but I do have a couple recommendations. But before I do that, I, I do want to say you took, you took our suggestions, our suggestions to heart, and you came up with some creative solutions that I hadn't thought of, I'll point that out. You have infrastructure at thirty-seven, parks at fifteen, and affordable housing at twenty, and you have rolling averages, which is something I wish I would have thought of, but did not. There are a couple of things in here, however, that I would like to see worked around, changed a little bit. And, and the thought is, you know, there, there's not a district commissioner here, and a motion that will come from me here in just a minute is just asking for a rewrite, not a vote by the board, just giving you direction to make a couple changes. I don't know that I'll have the support, but to be very clear, I'm not asking for this, if it does come out to go to Myra, I would like it to come back to the board for us to look it over again, thus giving more time for, you know, Myra to discuss this stuff, as well as getting us closer to the impending election. So my two and a half, three suggestions are as follows. There, the two-point-one million dollar Merritt Island Mall project is still in the plan, and here's where I have an issue with that. The plan referenced, quote, redevelopment to meet the needs of the community for the twenty-first century and to reverse the loss being, quote, "the center of commerce for central Brevard County" since the avenues at Viera opened in two thousand and five. So here's my thought. Now we're using taxpayer dollars on a private entity to compete with another private entity. I, I'm, I'm not so comfortable with that. Again, if we need to change this around, someone wanted to come purchase that, and they needed some incentive, that may be different, but to directly compete, I think, probably is not the wisest use of dollars, and I'm not comfortable with incentivizing one private company to, to, to compete with another one. I understand that, that business is failing, but our job is not to keep businesses afloat. I, I think we should have a level playing field. So that's number one. And number two, still in there, and, and let me point out, I asked for some things to be deleted, you did a great job. Most of them are no longer there, and, and I greatly appreciate that. But the second one was incentives to businesses to encourage the rehabilitation and modernization of buildings. It sounds a lot like facade grants. Not abandoned buildings, but those that are structurally sound. So if we're dealing with abandoned buildings, which pretty much is the Merritt Island Mall at that, at this point, to be all honest, I mean, I wouldn't mind us paying to, to knock it down if we had someone else that would be willing to put something there. So that, that's a little bit different, but this is, this is, certainly sounds like facade grants under a different name, so that I'm not too comfortable with. And number three, and this one's a little bit uncomfortable to discuss, but again, there are many CRAs out there, and I haven't done the comparison per CRAs, but as you know, you're the only one that falls under the purview of the county commission. The Myra operating expenses bother me just, just a little bit. It's twenty-three, you have down as twenty-three percent of, of a budget, and then I'm looking at the Myra operating expenses. What I did as a comparison, I pulled my operating expenses, I mean, roughly the same. I mean, I, I'm looking at, I'm, I'm looking at, you know, office supplies of, in the neighborhood, what you have down here of ten thousand dollars. You know, I, I'm looking at office supplies of my office, we were budgeted twenty-one-hundred thirty-one dollars and had eight hundred and twenty-five available at the end of last year. So we spent fifteen percent, and that doesn't even include, you know, binding, I don't know what the heck you guys are binding, but, you know, thousands of dollars for binding. You've got membership, you've got, you know, six thousand dollars for travel. I, I, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with, you know, six thousand dollars for travel. My office is a small, 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 small fraction of that, and it's the miles for my staff to get from the office to, to here. As an executive, again, I don't take any of those, but, and I'm not complaining with the salaries or the benefits, I'm just complaining about all of this other stuff on here, probably needs, I know it's uncomfortable, probably needs to be looked at, and I don't think you should be operating at three times the amount of a county commission or four times the amount. I mean, I tried to pull all of these and add-ups, aggregate some of them, and you're, you're running at some of your line items more than all of us combined. So again, it's only a few thousand dollars, but, you know, leadership certainly comes, comes from the top. But let me end with a positive, because I'm a teacher, and, and you always have to end with a positive. You did a great job here in the amount of time, and I have, I have a motion here, and again, this is just a motion to send it back to you to make some changer, changes, I don't want to say scribner, because they're a little more fundamental than that, and bring it back up to us to look at. I don't know whether to vote on, but at least to look. So the motion, I'd like to make a motion to send the Myra Plan update back to staff and direct them to update the plan proposal with the following changes. Remove the Merritt Island Mall project from the Myra Plan. Remove business incentives for the modernization, rehabilitation of structurally sound privately-owned buildings. Do a little bit, and third, do a little bit better on operating expenses to come in line with our office. In addition, direct staff to bring the revised Myra Plan back to the board by October eleventh regular board meeting. I think you're ninety-five percent here, and I'd just like to see that last five percent for us to look at and give the thumbs up, and I, I, you know, gave the commitment that would give Myra Board the ability to look at that, so we're not sending this to Myra Board, we're sending it to, to staff. So that's the motion. Madam Chair, I'm more than willing to answer any questions of the, the suggestions I have. Thanks for your time on this one.
All right. I have a motion, Commissioner Tobias? Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Tobias, I agree with you. I think they actually brought this back faster than, than I thought they would, and I think they've really done a lot of good tweaking as far as defining some items. And I don't, personally, I don't necessarily disagree with some of the things you had just mentioned. just mentioned. My concern is that we're going to have a new District Two Commissioner pretty soon, and I don't know that he's going to disagree with this as well. So I'm guessing that everybody's listening, and they're getting understanding of Myra, and certainly the board is too. And you guys are smart. I read through your data, and I've actually got a printout of everything you've spent, I had Ms. Hayes give it to me over the last few years. I know all the way down to the penny what you spend money on, and I think probably every office can tweak on that. But Commissioner Tobias, I don't disagree with that, but I think we can make a motion and do it, or just as common courtesy, you guys keep working on it and bring it back within a month or so with some information or changes, or at least speak to these. They're first time out for you, so you're going to need some time to digest it and speak to it. I'm thinking as we move forward that we should work on making sure the District Two Commissioner would be a voting member of this board. I don't know how to do that, but I think that would be a good thing because it's right in the middle of the area. And I think as a commission, I wouldn't mind seeing us going ahead and outlining how we do travel expenses for commission offices. And I think maybe the stronger we get with defining things moving forward, the better for the future. So I'm thinking that if you're outside of your district, maybe put in mileage, and if you're not, you probably should just digest it because it's kind of where you live. So I think there's some things we can do as a commission countywide with what we do on some reimbursements, but I'm going to have to really look at the things Commissioner Tobias was talking about with 23% in operating expenses and see what that details. I know there is some things you have to do because you guys are kind of a CRA, but you're not out seeking investments either, so that might be a little different. So Commissioner Tobias, a good point on that, and I really want to think through it. But again, the motion you're doing isn't, again, it was actually a very kind motion from you. So I don't think it's a bad thing, but I think before I vote on this, I'm going to want a District Two Commissioner in place. And I think with all the things you're bringing, sir, that they're very easy to digest, too, so.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I understand your trepidation on that, and I'm not, my motion, again, is not asking us to vote on anything. It's just to rework, and Mr. Lalo has a much better understanding than any one of our offices. Otherwise, I would go ahead and do it. But let me ask you why, let me tell you why I think this is, you know, good to at least send back, and we can answer that other part, you know, when that time comes. But in this plan, and I didn't mention, but this wouldn't start till fiscal year 2024. So this is nothing that would, even if we did vote on it, and this, we're not doing that now, but, you know, that's further down the road. And number two, there's some important goals in here that I didn't mention that, you know, Mr. Lalo took to heart, and certainly I think it's important that we get this correct because in there, he's got a five- to 10-year goal for adding 500 units of affordable housing on here. So I really want this tightened up as much as possible, ready to go as we move forward. And if we have a good document that we're comfortable with, and I don't have the votes before, you know, a commissioner comes in, you know, so be it, but I would really, as you guys were kind enough last time to authorize staff to work on something, I'm just asking that courtesy to be extended, and we'll discuss, you know, whether or not, if I lose it, more power, you know, but at least we'll have it ready when that commissioner, you know, does come in. So again, the motion is just asking for a few rewrites on things, and that's, you know, I hope I get your support on that.
And I myself am okay with the rewrites because I don't plan on voting for the modified Myra Plan until there is a District Two Commissioner. And it's unfortunate that, you know, we're stuck here again, you know, but if it was something critical, as far as, you know, an emergency, I would say let's vote on the plan, but I'm fine with supporting this to send it back to have them rework it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, I can count votes. And Commissioner Pritchett, it's very clear that I would not, even if Commissioner Smith would support, and the smile on his face, he's saying no way in hell, would support it. You have my commitment, not even to bring it up, to ask the board to support. I would rather do it, but the votes aren't here, so I'm not going to waste anyone's time to bring it up. But I would like to have a document that we're all comfortable with, and this just gets us closer to having that comfortable document. But if it was brought back at the next meeting, I would not ask the board to vote on it. I may ask, you know, to ask Mr. Lalo to bring it to the Myra to get their feedback on it, but I would not ask for a vote because clearly, to a view of given your indication that you won't support it until Commissioner, the new Commissioner would be there. So that takes your worry out of it because I don't have the votes.
Any more input?
I would just like to say that I appreciate the effort that you've made, and you've made some great, great points, and I'm not going to elaborate on any of them because, again, I think that it's important that we have that input from a D2 Commissioner. And I would be happy to hear what he has to say when he takes office. I won't be up here, but I think you make some very good points. So however we get there, it doesn't, I don't have an objection to going forward with this at this point, as long as we're not making a final vote until that person, he or she, takes office.
Commissioner Tobias?
Can I amend my motion to say, at the October 11th regular board meeting, we will not be voting on a final plan? So everything I asked, but to make it clear that there will be no vote on a final plan.
Sure. You can amend your motion to whatever you want it to be.
That would be my amendment.
I'll support that. I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias and a second by Commissioner Smith.
With just a comment. Commissioner Tobias and Mr. Larry, I think, I like where you're going with it, but if there's some reason that they have an explanation, that you would come back with an explanation of why it needs to be different, because I think that would greatly help us. Because I didn't do the math like Commissioner Tobias did with the operation expenses, so that would be an interesting justify or, really to justify it, but I agree. Let's go back to the table. You guys work this stuff out and either get us a good explanation of why you have to have it, or how you're going to change it, or those types of things. So I think that is absolutely prudent of us to do that, so.
Commissioner Tobias? Oh, your light was back.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay. All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, I was supposed to speak.
It says questions only.
I have no questions. I have nothing to say.
Okay, well, your card was marked incorrectly. It's not your fault. It's not mine either, but come on up.
I apologize.
No, I apologize.
I didn't know if I should step up in the middle of your conversation.
No, I apologize that.
I think that the things I have to say now are kind of, a little bit moot, but I guess what I want to say.
Or not. If we want to revote, we can withdraw, we can do whatever. I just apologize. This, again, the card's marked questions only, so we won't call on the person because it's only if we have questions for you.
You're in a pretty good place right now, though.
Yeah. As long as you don't talk for 15 minutes, I won't put the timer on.
All right.
You're in a good place, so don't screw it up.
Yeah, pressure, pressure. Look, I just want, number one, I wanted to thank you all for being a partner with Myra. And we are paying attention to your request for affordable housing and your concerns about the request for budget allocation. You know, when the Myra staff was asked to do this report for you guys to consider, I also asked them to look back at all the years and find out where we spent our money. And what we found out was over the past 15 years, we spent 78% of our leveraged TIF funds on infrastructure, along with getting more than $3 million in grant money just in the past three years. I believe that shows great value and reliability. The Myra Board has consistently fulfilled this board's request for accountability in the allocation of funds provided us. You have now given us clear directives on working on affordable housing, and I've got no reason to think that we're not going to do the same thing as we have in the past. I respectfully bring to your attention my concerns about the consequences of budget allocation. I'm not sure I've got enough time to talk about it. I would like to come speak to each of you individually as we're going through this again to understand the troubles that that may cause us. When we have a specific fund pre-allocated for specific projects, we lose our flexibility and our effectiveness as an agency. If our funds are tied to a specific silo for a future project, it will limit us, our ability to take on great opportunities to present themselves with infrastructure and lagoon projects or matching grant programs. Don't think I'm communicating very well here. We currently have a BGHS project that's on the docket, and this is over a $3 million project when it comes through. It could come through next week, next year, two years from now. And if we have our money allocated in different areas, and we have a grant possibility, and we don't have the funds to be able to put that together, we lose that opportunity to make that happen. The same can be true for affordable housing. One of the things we were talking about was the mall stuff. Well, a lot of what's happening with the mall is we're getting some phone calls about doing multifamily housing in that area. We've got to have some flexibility to be able to take advantage of that, and if we get a bunch of housing, affordable housing issues coming before us, and we don't have that money because it's allocated towards parks or infrastructure, then we're in the same boat. We can't move that money because it's allocated someplace else. One of our biggest strengths is having the ability to move the money around from project to project to take advantage of those great opportunities as they present themselves. So I would kindly ask that you think about these, you consider these concerns as you continue working with us on drafting the guidelines. And like I said, I want to make myself available to come and speak to you individually and talk about, you know, how that works, how a whole thing has worked in the past. But I think that key of 78% of our work on infrastructure for the past 15 years is an indication of how we work, and there's no reason why that can't happen with affordable housing. So I'm hoping we get the opportunity to share that with you in detail individually so you can see why I think that the, I personally feel that the allocation mode can hinder our effectiveness, and we have been effective. That's kind of what I wanted to say, so I will be coming to visit.
I appreciate, Marcus, and honestly, I apologize for the error.
It happens. I probably could have stepped in something, you would have helped me out, but I didn't know quite the protocol. I wasn't sure where we were going with this.
I'm glad you spoke up.
I'll do better next time.
Yeah. If that ever, it's not going to happen to you again, because I'm always going to ask now. But anyhow, thank you very much. And you know, and I think the board made it pretty clear, we're not going to be voting on anything until there's a District Two Commissioner.
I appreciate that, and I'm hoping to come before you each so you have a better understanding of what we're trying to do at Myra and what our hindrances might be, so you can help us come up with a plan that's going to work. That's what I wanted, so we can continue to be effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Item J1.
Do you have any cards?
Yeah.
Item J1, Commissioners, is approval of two capital facilities grants, one for the Valiant Air Command, the amount of $375,000, the second for the East Coast Geological Society's Aquarium, moving their grant amount from $10 million currently to $15 million with a two-year extension on the groundbreaking.
I have one card. Mr. Winston?
Questions?
Okay. See, and you don't have a question sticker on your card.
I think you got my sticker.
No. It'd be hard to do, but, all right. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I have a couple slides, I guess, with videos if we could play.
Yeah, I haven't seen them, so.
They're entertaining.
This has not gone through the chair, just warning the public.
Well, I sent this in time.
Yeah.
Okay. I did. And I had a couple pages of notes on this one, but I thought, you know, Mr. Winston could say it far better than what I could. So can we play the first one, preferably with audio?
For these funds, to make sure we lift fast as well as heavy.
Son of a motherless goat.
Logan has the audio. I can't turn it on from here. Either we got it or we don't. Either we're not coming back, we're breaking ground.
Yeah.
I think Logan has the audio. I can't turn it on from here. Including the $10 million that is currently committed by the TDC. The $10... Mr. Winston has the assistance. I welcome this two-year deadline for these funds to make sure we lift fast as well as heavy.
Okay, that was our first one. As you can see, 9/18/2020. It was going to happen two years. Now COVID happened there, so let's go to the second one.
I welcome this two-year deadline for these funds to make sure we lift fast as well as heavy.
That's great. Can we go to the next slide? COVID comes.
Either we got it or we don't. Either we're not coming back, we're breaking ground.
Can you play that one again?
Either we got it or we don't. Either we're not coming back, we're breaking ground.
Okay. This is in COVID. We have the director saying he's not coming back, okay? You want to hit slide? This is the one about the amount.
Currently committed by the TDC. The $10 million, the $10 million, the $10 million, the $10 million.
Okay, great. I put that $10 million in there in effect. He only said it once. So guys, I don't know why, I don't know why we're setting deadlines, because clearly, I know Mr. Winston is trying very hard, but he hasn't been successful on this one, and I don't, you know, I'm not going to vote for this, but in all honesty, if you do vote for this, and this is the same plea I made two years ago, don't give the man a deadline, okay? Don't put him in that, Mr. Winston. Can you come up here? I've got something for you.
This is scary.
Here you go. I don't know if you're willing to do this. I have a dollar writing on this, if you want to look into the microphone and repeat after me.
You don't have to read or do.
No, I'm not going to.
You don't have to do it.
I had a dollar writing on this.
I'm sorry, man.
You don't have to do any of this.
I, Keith Winston, do solemnly swear with absolute certainty and beyond a shadow of doubt with all honesty, bearing no exceptions, scouts honor, no ifs, ands, or buts, that I will not ever, ever come back and asking for an extension or additional monies. Again, I appreciate what you're doing, but if we set deadlines, what are we saying to everyone if we don't meet them? And then things go up. I understand prices go up. They don't go up 50%. I put in the calculation of the CPI that you mentioned in the letter, and it's like 11%, but you're asking for 50% more. So, board, I don't know what you're going to do here, but at least let's save Keith the, even though it's partially my, he's my appointee. Now, watch how you answer this, otherwise I'll kick you off the board. Just kidding.
No pressure.
But why do we keep on doing this to this man every two years? I would ask that, you know, I'm going to vote no on this, no matter what. Let me be clear, I was no the first time when I said it wasn't going to happen in that timeframe. I was no the second time when I said it wasn't going to happen in the timeframe. I'm going to be no now, but I'm trying to help you for the new commission. Why even give this man a timeframe?
But you would have said no regardless of the timeframe. You would have said no for the grant, period, even if it was in...
I did say no because of the timeframe, but I'm saying, let's at least be consistent. If we're going to set up a deadline that he asked for... If we're going to set up a deadline that he asked for, he brought up that deadline, and he doesn't, he's working extremely hard. Don't get me wrong. I've been out there. It's a wonderful zoo. I can't imagine fundraising. I do fundraise as a candidate. It's incredibly difficult. You're doing it with a bunch of zeros behind it. But from what you said up here, you're just not following, you're just not able to write, you know, to meet the goals that you're setting up, and we're having to push it back over and over and over again. So I'm trying to help you out. I'm saying, I'm not going to vote for this no matter what, but let's at least be kind to the guy and say, no deadline whatsoever. So he doesn't have to come up here. I won't be here in two years, but, and I wouldn't do that oath either, because I'm, I know you're going to have to come back here again. You are going to have, you might as well just say it. I'm going to come back here again, because we'd be stupid to believe otherwise. I mean, I honestly don't know, I honestly don't know what to say. This is happening over and over and over and over again.
Mr. Pritchett?
Mr. Winston, a couple questions here. You need a total of how many funds to build the aquarium?
So we are, so we are working, it's a $100 million campaign.
Okay.
We are at $47 million of it.
Okay. Is that counting these funds?
That is counting the $10 million, not the additional five. That will put us over 50%. We started the campaign actually formally December 2021, so we're feeling very good about it.
And you had COVID that kind of hit.
Yeah. I'd love to clarify one thing, if that's okay. Besides, I thought you did do a great job just illustrating how I have less and less hair every time I come to present here.
Oh, I noticed the glasses.
I appreciate that, so, but anyway, I wanted to clarify one piece about that, and that is, when I last came, I did have a longer request, and the quote that you showed me in the video was aligned with that longer request, but you all had the foresight to say, no, we don't want to do that. We're going to take it two years because there's so much uncertainty with COVID. Come back to us when you know more. And with that in mind, we have, it was only last, the end of last September 2021, that we had a formal date with the port who we're leasing it with, and so we have an option to lease, and that runs out the end of September 2024. So we're aligning this date with that date, so there makes a lot of sense. I will never say never, because we never know what's going to happen after COVID. We all learned a lesson there.
How long do you think you need if we, I don't want to do no deadline, just because it quits happening, we can move the funds back.
Of course. The deadline that would align with the port is 2024. It's the end of, it's the end of September 2024.
I wouldn't even mind giving you three or four or five years.
That would be wonderful. If you want to give me an extra year, it certainly is appreciated.
But at least some type of cap, so future commissions.
Absolutely. And we need to get it done at a certain point, you know, if there isn't the momentum there isn't, but we're feeling quite good about it.
A quick question, because I was thinking about this, because I know to run an aquarium is going to be really expensive with all those big fish in water. Have you done a feasibility study yet? Because my guess is that once we get it in, I know you're going to be charging, but I have a feeling the TDC is going to have to continue to help support it some, like we do the zoo. So I'm just kind of curious about that, to know how we budget that in the future.
Yeah, so absolutely. It's actually the opposite. Because of economies of scale and the ways that aquariums work, we started off this journey about 10 years ago doing projections, and no matter how much we stressed it, because of the economies of scale, the aquarium turned out to be a profit center for conservation.
Have you done a feasibility, though?
Yeah.
You did do one?
Yeah.
Would you send that to us?
Sure. We have five, we did five different attendance projections.
Okay, that would be great.
We took the most conservative.
I would love to see that if you were in mind.
I will get that to you. It's in, it's actually, I believe it's in the TDC packet.
Okay, because I do like the aquarium, but I do want to note again, it's going into Cocoa Beach, so it's where we're spending all the funds. I'll give you an extra five if you move it to District Five or One.
Well, we're so close, Commissioner. No, we're actually on port land. We're very close to you.
I'm kind of joking, but Mr. Cranis, let me ask you a question. On these total amount of funds that we're giving to these two projects, was this the total amount of money that we had? Is that why we did what we did with five?
No, ma'am. We had, for this fiscal, we had $2 million available.
Okay.
And out of that, we're only, we were only awarding the Valiant Air Command $375. The zoo amount won't start till the 2024, '25 fiscal, so it would be future funds that we would be pledging.
So is there extra funds left over still for capital?
There are some capital funds available, yes, ma'am.
Okay, because my request, Commissioners, again, I'm trying to work on our equity thing a little bit here. I would just ask you, because you make the final decisions, that we could go ahead and give the Valiant Air Command the amount they asked for. And again, it's up to you guys, just because I think we need to start distributing some of these capital funds to other districts. It is a good project, and I'm not really sure I understand why we did what we did. But again, maybe we should have had more projects come in as well. So I'm just going to request that, that we would approve this, but I would just request, and it's up to you guys, won't be mad at all, but I think it'd be appropriate if we went ahead and gave the Warbird Air Museum $750,000 as well, because I kind of looked at the votes and who voted, and I just think it would be appropriate, so.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for Mr. Abate. I think it was stated here that, didn't you say something about the prices don't go up 50% or what? Do you remember that comment?
Yeah. Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, the citation made in the letter references a, an index on inflation, so I calculated the index that Mr. Winston used, and it was 11.3%. So I'm not arguing, I'm just arguing the index that he referenced to keep it fair. So that was...
Okay. Well, that's really what I'm referencing. So Mr. Abate, how much did it cost us in addition to, well, what did the price go up on the EOC? Because we had like a $12 to $15 million number about two years ago, and now we're spending about $32 million.
It was a little bit, well, actually, the number for EOC, when it was reduced initially, which was more than two years, it was like four or five years ago, was 18 to 19 million. The price that came in was closer to 39 million.
Right, okay. So that's my point. Numbers are beyond our control, and if you want to get where you're going to go, you're either going to have to spend a dime or pack it up and go home. That's really where you are.
Yeah, construction costs are different, you know, as you know, they are through the roof right now, as the affordable housing people talked about earlier, tiny houses.
Commissioner Tobias?
There is Valiant Air Command that was in there, that was listed at $375. Did we just, did we just suggest to double that?
Yeah, I was requesting that. Let me explain why. When we've been doing these capital projects, when we first came on, we were trying to do an event center up there for $7 million. We weren't able to do that. We were trying to do it with Delaware North. I felt good about that. When they pulled out, I just didn't feel like it was a good project. So we have done good distribution with many projects. District One hasn't had any capital projects yet, so this is how the capital projects fund. It is a great museum. They have a lot of warplanes up there, and Mr. Winston, you know, too. And so I think we're doing a lot of changes as far with how we think on the board a bit. So as far as capital project thing, I'm just asking for it. I know your face right now. I love it. I know.
I just want to go back to what we did at the beginning, when we gave Mr. Cranis a hard time for arbitrarily adding 50%, and now we're going to arbitrarily add 100%. So as a consistency issue, during this meeting, there's a whole bunch of red flags that are going off.
But sir, they had asked for the 750, and with the way the votes came back, I think because they were trying to move it all to this, so.
Well, what, let me, and you brought up some good, you brought up some good points here. I'm going to be no on this forever, but I'm trying to help Mr. Winston here, and it seems like bad cop, good cop. You just are getting more money and more time because of the, you know, stuff I put you through here. But I want to point out, this aquarium is a heck of a lot better than dinosaurs. And I would like to see us put, I mean, if you really want to help out the zoo or the aquarium, we need to focus our resources on that. Instead of throwing $20,000 here or $30,000, we don't know what the increase will be on that. Mr. Winston is saying that his zoo is going to be a profit center, which, by the way, I'd like to see that analysis, because here's the deal. When you have other people paying for your capital, then it's not a profit center. I mean, if you give me a Ferrari, I can manage that Ferrari. I just can't afford to build one or buy one myself. The same thing with the zoo. So the analysis is probably not that fair, and I understand that, and strange the analysis, didn't see the cost go from 80 million to 100 million, but when that doesn't go into the analysis, that isn't here. But what I'm saying is this, let's focus. If you guys want this, I think the zoo, or I think the aquarium, is far better use of dollars than what we did with the cultural. And that would take a concerted effort up here to reorganize those dollars that meet within state guidelines. And while I won't vote for the funds to go there, I would feel a heck of a lot more comfortable that they would go to the zoo or the aquarium than all of these other nickel and dime things that we do, because I do believe he has a great model with the zoo, and I do believe that he will do a great job with the aquarium. And thank you so much for all your work, coming back up here. I greatly, you have such pride in the zoo, and you should. It is a wonderful, wonderful area, and it's a jewel in Brevard County, and I'm sure the aquarium will, whether it's in District Three or District Two or District, whatever the heck the place may be. But I would ask that if you guys want these things funded, that someone take the lead on this and reorganize the TDC resources so we can put it, focus it in on the aquarium, because I think you need four votes. You would certainly have my vote if we would align it to get it in that area.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Do we have to have four votes to pass this?
Not this, but to read, to change the order.
I, you know, Commissioner Tobias, I don't disagree with much of that. I always like seeing the capital projects more than the cultural grants. And again, my head knows that it's important, but my heart's not always in the cultural stuff. It's just bad, I'm sorry, it's just who I am. But logically, I know from listening to other people that are smarter than I am, how important it is. So I could possibly be very easily tweaked to make some changes with that, Commissioner Tobias. So I just wanted to tell you that. But I'm just going to try throwing out a motion here to go ahead and pass the 15 million to the aquarium, 750,000 to the Warbird, and then give you an extension of five years to either come back at that time, I hear them laughing down there, or to come back and tell us what you need to do different.
All right. I think five years is a little long, but, and you've, I mean, I think what gets lost in all this discussion is the fact that you've managed, I say you, I know it's been an effort, it's been a concerted effort of many, many, many people, $47 million for this aquarium. That's impressive. I mean, that's, there's something to be said for that. There's the communities behind it. So these are what these dollars are for, so I'm all for this. The fact that the Warbird Museum requested that amount is a little different than the cultural grants we were just arbitrarily giving 50% more money to. I noticed all, if you noticed too, in the agenda packet, all the cultural grants, all of their, asked for the spending was for marketing, which I thought was hilarious, because I thought they were asking for all this money for marketing, but there's no real plan, but, you know, God forbid we spend money for marketing for the Weston, but that's neither here nor there. So I'm going to support this, because I'm a big fan. And you and I, we've talked about this for many years, and you are going to make money, and you're actually going to contribute some of that money, those tickets to the lagoon, which, the ticket funding for the lagoon, so I'm excited. I mean, what do you see? What do you see in your future? I mean, you don't have a crystal ball.
I don't have a crystal ball. First of all, I appreciate the generosity of spirit of Commissioner Pritchett with five years. Obviously, I would love that. I'm going to be, I'm going to say three years. I think that's, we have a deadline with the port, and that is a really hard deadline. We lose the option, the ability to lease that land. But I like to have a little slush in there, as Commissioner Tobias has pointed out, unforeseen things. So three years would be wonderful.
And I would just ask that, you know, I would say at least semi-annually or annually come to the board and just give an update on how the fundraising is going, how, you know, any new hurdles, any successes, that kind of stuff, and maybe so the board kind of knows what's going on, because we all have the benefit of having sat with you for many hours and discussed this and hammered out small details. There'll be new members, and I'm sure the public would be interested to hear.
It would be my pleasure, and we have wonderful updates as the design has evolved, and we would love to share this.
Okay.
I would like to just say that, it's not working.
Yeah, it's working.
Is it?
Yeah, it's on.
It's not on here.
Airlight's on. Airlight's here.
Uh-huh. I'm new here. I think Shakespeare said it best, I'm going to paraphrase a little bit, but he said, "The course of raising money is like love. It never does run smooth." So that's your answer.
And that's what'll be in Florida today tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Of all that discussion, that's what they'll put in. All right, I have a motion. Second?
Second.
Second for three years? Yes, ma'am. Okay, so the motion's amended for three years. Second still stands?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I, of course, supported. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 3-1.
Thank you all for your support. I look forward to giving you an update. Thank you.
Awesome, great. And it's been requested to take a quick five, seven-minute recess, because we don't know how long we're going to be here.
Where's Smith?
Get the gavel.
I think the rest is pretty stale, straight?
Commissioner Smith?
We have nobody in their chairs.
Gavel down, you're the boss lady.
All right, we're still missing a commissioner. But if you could just start, Mary, item J2.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mary Ellen Donner, Brevard County Parks and Rec Department Director. Item J2 is looking for direction from the Board of County Commissioner regarding the payment of background investigation screenings for recreation partners, their associated volunteers, and recreation instructors. Currently, the partners are paying one-half of the background screening cost, and it was anticipated that October 1st, based on a motion from a year ago, the partners would pay 100%, and so we're looking for direction if that's the route you wish to still go.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, no, I'm not comfortable with this necessarily, just because, again, we are extending deadlines. You went over the cost, and Commissioner Pritchett, she was the commissioner that brought this up. So, in deference to Commissioner Pritchett, I know that she'll like this motion, because obviously I haven't discussed that with her, but it would be to approve option 1, but with a one-year renewal period instead of what you have down there, five. And after that one-year period has concluded, the cost will lie slowly, sorry, the cost will lie solely on the rec partners. So that would be the motion. Again, it's very similar to option number 1.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, yes, sir, I second that. At least it'll give a little bit more time for them to adjust and us to see what the outcome is of that. So thank you for that, sir, I appreciate it. My concern would be is that the rec partners might get a little bit more sloppy with background checks, which are important, so thank you for that. I will second that motion.
All right, I have no cards. I'm in agreeance as well. I think it gives them another cushion of leeway to, you know, kind of get the word out, you know, for the people that don't, I guess, aren't quite aware. Gives them a year to fundraise if they need to fundraise more to be able to carry the burden of those costs, so I'll be in support of this as well. All right.
May I have a point of clarification, please? So you are proposing that they only be allowed to submit for a one-year background check?
No.
No? Okay.
I think, Commissioner Tobias, you're saying we just continue what we're doing right now for next year?
Yeah.
No, Madam Chair, that was different from what I said. That's why, that was the spin on one. So you have a choice of whether or not to get a one-year background check or a five-year background check. And, of course, all of these folks are choosing the longer five-year background check. And there are disproportionate amount that this year are running up, so we have the ability for costs to run up very quickly. So I think that's not necessarily, you know, fair. So I would continue it one year, and if those individuals wanted to get a one-year background check, then we would cover half of that. If they wanted a five-year background check, we would not cover any of that. Again, a disproportionate amount comes up this year, so these costs could rise very, very, very quickly. Recall, the board said they were not going to do this. So anything that we do is more than what the motion was in past. We've given them plenty. This gives them a bridge, but does it in a fiscally responsible way. I would not support extending it for a year and giving them the ability to get that five-year background check. I think that is cost prohibitive.
Can I take back my second?
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias.
I took it back, those open.
And then a second by Commissioner Smith.
Let me throw out a question to you, Commissioner Tobias. I think you're only talking like a three or $4 difference in the one-year and the five-year, because the economics on that were pretty compatible, correct?
I'm sorry?
For us, wasn't it a very small delta between the one-year and the five-year? Aren't I correct on that?
So currently, the one-year cost is $44.26, so the partners pay half, we pay half. The five-year cost is $79, so the partners pay half, we pay half.
So it's like an $18 delta per person for the five years?
Yeah, my math is a little bit different. You know, first of all... Yeah, it's the difference of 35, so...
Divided by two, because we're paying half. So that's like $1,750.
Yeah. But here, what we're doing is we're extending it, in essence, for five years now for doing that. We...
I know. I think a lot of people have already done it, though. I know this is the cost of what the last year was, and that's why she's got that impact, but I think this, the last year, so they kind of jumped in and did it. So just a thought on that. But, again, Commissioner Tobias, you know, of course, whatever the board wants to do, but I do have a great concern because of the amount of comments I got last time from the community when we did this in my office. Because it's a great project for them, and I know eventually we need to do something different, but I have a feeling this is going to start costing the kids in sports. So if that's all I can get out of you, I'll take it, but I think if you would do the other, you would be smiling down here at you, too, so...
So what is your primary difference between what he's saying?
That we just do exactly what we did this year for one more year, and then, as Commissioner Zonka had stated with the other, that it gives them one more year to really get busy fundraising and cover these costs a little better.
But, Madam Chair?
Yes.
We'd already set this deadline, what, a year and a half ago?
July of 2021.
Okay. So, you know, we'd given them more than a year heads up on this one. I think extending it and allowing them to take advantage of that, whether it's $18 or $1.80, I think is inconsequential. I think, you know, going, I mean, I'll meet you, shucks, I'll meet you in the middle, Commissioner Pritchett, if that makes you happy, and say that we were going to contribute $22 of the 44, right? So we'll contribute $22 of the $79 if you want. I'm sure that's more of an accounting issue than what practically would work, but, you know, it's...
So basically, you're saying...
Isn't that why they'd have the option?
They would have an option, correct.
So you're, we're talking about 13 bucks, right? That's what we're talking about?
$1,750.
How much?
$17.50.
Well, no, if he's going to go his route...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It would only be a $13 difference. Right?
No.
What am I missing?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, so there's two options when they renew. One year, which is $44.
Right. And the other, $79.
$79, okay. The delta there is obviously 35 bucks. So the argument I made, we were going to pay $22 of the 44, so if they wanted to get the 79, the five-year one for 79, we would give them 22 of that 79, what we would have paid otherwise. So, in other words, it would cost them $57. And let's, I mean, let's not be melodramatic, $57 is not going to keep kids from playing sports. I mean, let's, let's...
As opposed to $3,950.
As opposed to...
Is that right? $3,950 would be...
Yeah, but they still, they would still have to pay that, you know, so no kids are going to stop playing sports because coaches have to get background checks that cost 30 bucks.
Yeah.
So...
It's a good compromise, I think.
What do you think?
I'm thinking the same thing. I think a flat amount toward it that gives them the option, if they want to get the one-year or the five-year, if we flat dollar. I kind of like that idea a lot better.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I, can I ask, and I hadn't run this by, this is scary, I'm sorry, Mary Ellen, is that possible to reimburse half? I don't, I don't know. Do you have the accounting where for all to cover a portion of that?
I believe that we could set that up with the fingerprint agency.
Okay, super, wonderful.
I believe, yes. It's just a percentage.
He's meeting you halfway.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good. I'll amend my second to cover.
Do you want to restate it for the clerk, so there's no confusion?
Thank you, so you can throw away the first one. Son of a gun. To amend the motion for one year where the county will cover $22, sorry?
$22.13.
$22, yes.
And 13 cents.
$22.13, thank you, of the cost for either the one-year renewal or the five-year renewal. The program will be available for an additional one year.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias.
Second.
My second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That was mildly painful. All right, moving on to item J3.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Item J3 is the pay adjustment to comply with Florida's Medicaid Provider Minimum Wage requirements. It is being requested the board approve delegation of authority to the county manager to approve all necessary actions, including, but not limited to, a memorandum of understanding with the IFF Local 2969 to ensure compliance with the Florida Medicaid Provider Wage requirements. As part of this downward-directed mandate, the supplemental wage agreement must be submitted to OCA, also known as the Florida Agency for Healthcare, by October 1 of 2022. According to the OCA mandate, organizations that do not meet the minimum wage threshold will be subject to civil liability, including attorney fees and costs, beginning on January 1 of 2023.
All right, I have one card. Mr. Bramson?
Good morning, Madam Chair, thank you for the board. Michael Bramson, President of Brevard County Professional Firefighters, which is headquarters in Rockledge, Florida. I received a notice late yesterday from Jerry Visco that addressed one of our concerns, which was the ability, depending on what happens today and/or implementation of something that happens on October 1st, to meet with us. That includes a couple other things and potentially negotiation options. Until we got to that point, there was a fantastic lack of full directions and details of what was happening at the state, happening at the county level, and happening at other agencies around the state of Florida who may or may not qualify for these same restrictions. Prior to that meeting or that letter yesterday, we had an opinion that we received midsummer, and last week I was able to pull off the clerk of court, J3, that said pay adjustments to comply with Florida Medicaid Provider Minimum Wage requirement. That was all the information that we had that we were able to pull off the internet. It caused quite a bit of a problem, the lack of details, transparencies, impositions of what was going to happen, and we're very much aware of how people sometimes feel, especially in this climate, about this union and our firefighters. But we've had a string of pretty bad luck here in Brevard County when it comes to your fire department, and professional courtesy or transparency would go a long way just to know what that implies, pay adjustments to comply with. We didn't know. Because of the nature of wages, especially in Brevard County, our firefighters became very anxious about what this is going to imply. Once again, we did receive notice yesterday that we are going to move forward on something that we requested by you, and we were very hopeful that that will result in some things that will be best for the department as well as for public safety in Brevard County. But once again, we are very anxious about what we're going to be facing, either after today's decision on J3, or what will be implemented to our firefighters on October 1st, which we have no idea. In the interim, as that anxiety increases, we will continue to provide the fantastic public service that we always have, and we will try to do the best in the best interest of Brevard County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner? Commissioner Tobias?
Motion to give authority to county manager.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Pritchett. My only question, I know there was a response by staff, is that my concern is compression with existing members, and I don't know what those numbers look like.
Yeah, staff does not look at that as a compression issue, Commissioner. We are just trying to meet the regulations, which were, we believe, if whatever degree of funding the state may provide, will only be partial funding for whatever the cost is. And as you know, the board has entered into a three-year negotiated agreement, which is in place, and so what we're looking to do is to assure that we follow the Medicaid regulatory requirements, consistent with everything that was previously negotiated, and have language that reflects exactly that, and that's what we're going to do.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, just a quick comment. We all voted to give you guys a substantial amount of money, we're going to continue that for a while, and I think during that conversation, I was kind of hoping that these employers would have been jumped up fairly quickly, because you had a hard time keeping new recruits. So I'm looking at the pay scale here, and this matter comes into play with people 15 an hour or less. I think those EMTs and the paramedics, I think you guys need to get those salaries up, and then what's left, move up the chain a little bit. So I'm kind of hoping that that'll happen for those workers. So that would be something I would like to see. I think that was a lot of conversation in the beginning, and I don't think anybody should be getting hired in at 10 an hour. You guys should be well into 15 an hour right now, and then distribute the rest of the funds after that, so you're able to keep your new recruits and keep people on board.
Commissioner Tobias?
I wasn't planning on speaking on this, but it seems, you know, the board has made comments, so I need to make, unfortunately, some comments here. This was a mandate from the state. I'm actually a little disgusted with the transparency. The IAFF is a well-organized group. Hopefully, they have a lobbyist up there in Tallahassee to watch what was going on, and if you don't, that's not our problem. You are more than welcome to go up there and lobby, one way or another, but when they pass stuff down to us by saying that there's a lack of transparency by everything that was put on well ahead of time, that's disingenuous. I'd like to make a point that not one firefighter, or paramedic, or anyone will be losing $1. This is about a pay increase, which is very hard to understand, so that you have a group that is complaining or wanting to change negotiations, because certain folks, and I'm willing to guess out here, that are in the audience and the leadership, they're not getting more money, any more than what they already got. They're people at the bottom. So to be very clear, you have a group complaining because they're receiving more money. For the folks out there, one of two things happened here. You need to be very clear. One of two things happened. Either the negotiating team, our negotiating team, was so damn good, or your negotiating team was so damn bad, because what you agreed to, the state said, oh, by the way, we're going to have to bump up that a little bit more. So one of those two things happened. I guess it could be a combination of us being so bad and you guys being so, so, sorry, us being so good and you guys being so bad, but you agreed to something that the state said we actually had to increase. So I just, again, want to say, and I've said this in the past, though I didn't support it, I think our negotiating, and it showed up to many of them, did a damn good job, and here's proof that we did a damn good job, because the state had to step in and say the thing that the labor union agreed to wasn't good enough. So hats off to you guys. I'm not worried, I won't lose one second of sleep over an issue of compression. If that was important to any, you know, the folks, they wouldn't have agreed to the contract in the first place. So let's, you know, abide by the contract that we have in place, that I think was overly generous, that, you know, but to complain about a pay increase is just beyond me. I don't understand, I don't understand, we'll never understand the logic in complaining about a pay increase.
All right, any further comments? I have a motion and a second. And my only other further comment would be is, you know, shame on me for not knowing that we had EMTs that made $10 an hour, because that's really sad. You know, and I, again, I'm proud that we were able to finally bump up people that needed it, that had already committed 10 years or more of their lives here. I think that that was something that was owed for many, many years. But to have, like, a non-fire-certified EMT and a PM and a fire-certified EMT makes 12.60 an hour to start, that's really sad.
It's not what we wanted.
No, it's not. Not how we get people to come want to work here. So I don't think, I don't think this is a bad thing. Compression is a concern of mine, because I don't think the guy that's worked here six years should make close to the same, but it's happened to me. At my organization, it depends on the market, depends on the negotiating team of that year, and it's a problem that will always be in place with union contracts, where there's steps and there's, you know, there's increases for different groups, so it's an unfortunate consequence of having those multi-level contracts. So I'll support this.
I find it, it's a shame that we're both in this position, that you guys are in this position and that we're in this position. I think it's a perfect example of what happens when government interferes with the natural state of, in this case, wage increase. Wages increase because of demand, and that happens in a natural function. When I was an employer, I think when I started my business, the last business that I started, I think the minimum wage was 3.50, and I started everybody at 5. And then, as time went on, when they raised the minimum to 5 bucks, I was paying everybody 8 bucks. But that's the natural, the natural occurrence of business. When you have, when you have a business that can raise prices, as I could, I had to weigh that against losing customers versus losing employees. And I always erred on the side of employees, because I just felt like customers would, if you do a good job, customers are going to come. But this is government, and somehow the people in the state, for whatever reason, voted for an across-the-board pay increase to 15 bucks an hour for the minimum wage, which throws all that natural occurrence out the window. And so now you're betwixt and between, because you have people that are making 15, and you have people that are making 10. Well, now the 10 people are going to make 15, and the 15 people are making the same as those people. And people that are making 18, so there's no, it's just artificial, and it's a shame that we're all in that position. I feel for you guys, I feel for us, but thank the people of the state that did it, because they're the ones that voted for it.
All right, so no further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to public comments. I have no cards. It's crazy. And on to board reports. Mr. Batte?
I have no report.
Mr. Richardson?
No report.
Commissioner Pritchett? Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On August 30th, the board voted to send out letters to businesses within Brevard County encouraging participation in that self-certifying registry to protect sex offenders from entering, and predators from entering their business. I just want to report back that my office has been making phone calls, and we have a fair amount, we're working higher, but I think I have, do I have a slide up here? I think it should be coming. Yeah, the first business was Graceful Gift Dance Academy in District 2, the first one to respond to be added, and I guess there's 10 or 15 more. Each business will be getting calls and follow-up letters from my office explaining the program, but thank you to Graceful Gifts Dance Company and District 2 for looking out for the health and safety of the kids that go there, and I'd encourage the rest of this board to make some phone calls. I understand the zoo just signed up for this. It's a wonderful opportunity to make sure those individuals that we don't want in those areas are not. So thank you very much for taking action as a board, and it's having measurable results, and hopefully they continue. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Logan has a flyer to show us. This is announcing that the City of Palm Bay invites everyone for a naming ceremony for the Patrick Woodard Memorial Park, formerly Oakwood Park, and that will be this coming Monday, the 19th, at 11:30 a.m. So Mayor Medina is the one that spearheaded this move, and the Palm Bay Council followed suit and honored this fine gentleman. That's all I have.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I thought so.
That's great. All right, and I have no report, so with that, meeting adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida. Space Coast Government Television are the program's sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.